Welcome. This is the April 1st, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right and proceed down the hall to the right and down the stairs. If the hall is blocked, exit to your left and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and do let us know if you need assistance. At this time, we do ask everyone, please silence your cell phones. And I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember those who lost their lives this week in Baltimore City with the Key Bridge tragedy. Thank you. And again, our hearts and our prayers are with our friends in Baltimore, and we're ready to help where we can. Public comments will be heard after each agenda item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. At this time, we'll hear from the Wakamiko Mentoring Project with a presentation by Mr. James Hessen. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for this time. My name's James Hessen. I'm a people personnel worker for Wakamiko County Public Schools. And one of the job duties that I have under my description is kind of an ancillary job, is one of our programs that we run. It's called the Wakamiko Mentoring Project. It's run strictly by the Wakamiko County Public Schools. And there are four of us that are involved in this project. I am one of the district-level co-coordinators. I'm also joined in my duties by Linda Mullen, who's also another people personnel worker, and Tamira Foreman, another people personnel worker. They can't be here today. They apologize. But Tamira runs a lot of our community education, a lot of the resources within the community. Lynn and I kind of run back behind the scenes a little bit as far as the district level goes. We're also joined by one of our administrative assistants, Janie Gosley, who kind of runs all the brains behind the project itself. The mentoring project began back in the 1990s. It was the kind of the brainchild of Henrietta Parker, who had a full-time staff at Wakamiko County Public Schools. And it's kind of going through some transitions and some growing pains. And during the pandemic, it kind of shut down for a little while. But my colleagues and I inherited the project at the beginning of this past school year, and we have been working diligently to rebuild over the last few years what we've kind of lost during the pandemic. And essentially, what we do, our mission and our vision, is to bring mentors into our schools to work with our students who are in need of that additional support, that may not have support at home, that may not have hot meals at home, and the school is really the area or that place in that student's life that brings some sort of normalcy into their void. So essentially, what I'm here tonight to talk to you about is kind of bring everyone up to speed on what we're doing within Wakamiko County Public Schools, but also to ask a favor. And I'll kind of elaborate that on that in the next couple of minutes. But we have 16,400 students within Wakamiko County Public Schools and roughly about 3,000 staff members as far as our current numbers go. This past year, actually, this past week, I ran our numbers for the mentoring project, and we are currently up to 128 mentees, which at the beginning of the year, we started with about 70 mentees. So we have actually gained approximately 60 mentees since the beginning of this past school year. And we have this with 52 mentors, all adults, all volunteering their time. I myself am also a mentor, and also a few of our other PPWs in our department are also mentors, as well as our supervisor and numerous others from the county, from the board level, district level of Wakamiko County Public Schools. The numbers, I want the numbers to sound great because this is what we do, and we are growing this program as much as we can. But that is servicing less than 1%. I think it's 0.007% of our student population. Now, this is kind of a twofold thing. It's our job to make sure that the Wakamiko Mentoring Project is getting out and we're marketing to your constituents and to members within the education community, too. But it's, we have a very lofty goal. Linda Mullen, one of our other coworkers, likes to say that we want mentors for all 16,400 of our students, which is a very lofty goal, indeed. Okay? But we're committed to this, and we are committed to making sure that the kids that need mentors and would like mentors, or their parents would like them to have mentors, they have the advantage of having those individuals in the schools helping them out. And we're only looking for one hour a week of their time. And for some people, that's pushing, and I understand. I have two mentees myself, and that is a task. My mentees are actually at the primary school level, and working with them, you know, 30, 45 minutes is pretty much about all I'll be able to get from them, because they're pretty active. But the benefits, and I've seen this firsthand myself, having a mentor when I was younger, but also for students that have mentors. For students, what it does is if they have behavior issues and their behavior's in question, you start to see improvements in their behaviors. And mentoring is not a reward, it's not a punishment or anything like that. We use it as an intervention within the school system. Okay? So at any point in time, if a mentor goes into a school and somebody says that they're not to see their mentor today because they're being punished, we address that immediately. We also see an increase in grades, overall performance increases, because the self-efficacy and the social development of that student is also directly impacted positively by that mentor. And we ask that mentors, we ask that mentors kind of keep an open mind and open heart, and we make sure that they're not preaching to the students and they're not trying to parent the students, they're trying to guide them. They're kind of like the proverbial Sherpa. They're going up Mount Everest, and Mount Everest is life, and the Sherpa is there to make sure that they're carrying their belongings with them and helping them along their way. But what I've also gained, too, is that mentoring has made me a much more patient person overall. I've been an educator in Wakamiko County for a number of years now, was also an administrator for 10. And the one thing that mentoring has done for me, it has made me kind of look within myself, and I've kind of been able to slow myself down, especially when I'm dealing with a five-year-old and a seven-year-old. Okay? I also have children of my own, but it's also very different. So this patience that I've learned is also really good. But it's also socialization for the mentors and the mentees. It's building a sense of community, which with the pandemic, since, you know, 2020, we've kind of lost that idea of community. And we're trying to bring people back into the schools to help our students. And also, it's also really important to start setting examples. You know, as a mentor, if you have a mentor as an adult, you're learning by example. If you're a student and you're a child learning from a mentor, we want to set a positive example for all of our students. Okay? So what we offer, we offer training as far as Wakamiko County Public Schools go. Mentors that want to sign up, we do a brief background check, and we bring them in for about an hour's worth of training. The training expands upon basic knowledge of blood-borne pathogens. We would never ask any mentors to clean up any kind of blood or anything like that. What we do is it's more for providing them with options for if something were to happen, how to go about reporting and how to take care of it. We also offer some, a mini-course in child abuse and neglect. That's mandatory. Because working within the schools, you are a mandated reporter. If a child does report something to you, you have to report it to DSS or to CPS. The Wakamiko Mentoring Project is very flexible. We only ask for about an hour of your time every week. If you can give us that, if you can just give us some time, we're looking for that, too. The other benefit is, too, is if you would like to be a mentor, and I'm opening this not just to the council or to the mayor, but also to the full city of Salisbury, if anyone would want to be a mentor, we offer things like school choice. If you want to focus on our youngest students, say, if you're looking at primary schools, we can assign you to a school that you would like to go to. If you want to worry about a mentor secondary students, we could do that as well. We need mentors across all of our grade levels. So if you're interested more in mentoring an elementary school student, we can provide that. But we can also kind of move around based upon what the need is. Okay? And if you're working with a student and you get along really well with that student, you can also bring other students into the fold and start working with them, too. The only thing that we ask on the parent's side of things is for permission slips signed, so the parent knows that they're going to be working with a mentor within the schools. Their students are going to be working with mentors within the schools. All right. So this kind of brings me to what we need or what we're requesting, what we're asking for, is citywide, we're looking for mentors. It doesn't matter where they're from, what their background is. Now, there are certain issues with the background. We make sure that, looking through the background check, there aren't any violent crimes against children or anything along those lines, parking tickets or speeding tickets, you know, we can live with those, as long as it wasn't a...
All right.
I didn't put that in there, though. But I just want to make that clear. You know, we do do background checks, but it is more, we're trying to find more things that are akin to violence against children or violence in general. We're also looking for mentees, people within your, with your constituents, your actual constituency itself, need our help, and they need the help of the mentors within the schools. You know, you do hear things about the school district that I've worked for for numerous years now and that I happen to love. But if you know of anyone, or if you're hearing any kind of families having problems within the schools, maybe the best road is possibly for mentoring for their students, or they could become a mentor from within the schools. If you have a student that's in the public school setting and you're a parent, what a better way to be a mentor, what a better thing to do is go into your student's school and actually be a mentor. Okay? The last thing, along going with mentors and mentees, is also just reaching out to the folks that are in your constituents, that are in your constituency, and just letting them know that the school is on their side, and if they are looking for any kind of resources or they're looking for help. Not only the Wakamiko Mentoring Project can help out, but also, in my role as a people personnel worker, that's what we do. We break down barriers, physical or other, you know, financial barriers or, you know, barriers of homelessness or anything like that, poverty. And we work with those families to ensure that their students can enjoy their public education and get them into school as soon as possible. If they're not enrolled, and if they are enrolled, then we can continue to work with the schools to make sure that they're getting the education that they need and they deserve.
Absolutely. Well, listen, thank you, Mr. Hessen. And, you know, personal privilege, you know, I appreciate you for, one, being one of those educators who was a mentor to myself. And so, thank you for that.
My pleasure.
If there's anyone who deserves to be a PPW in our school systems, who I know is fighting for our children and leading this task, so thank you for providing that information. I know that we on the council will take that charge in the mayor's office to make sure that if not, we personally can provide those services to be a mentor. We'll solicit those in the community, because it is going to take that effort, and we are that village. So thank you for providing that. We have the information. Can you send us any sort of collateral or flyers?
Absolutely. I have, I have a bunch of digital information. Should I send it to Ms. Nichols?
Yeah, it goes into the clerk, and then she'll distribute it out, and then that way we can publicize it, get it out to our constituents. And then, of course, if we have someone in need directly, that would be amazing. So we appreciate that and look forward to the help that we can provide. Anyone else have any?
I think Amanda Pollak led a citywide mentoring project when she was here. And I don't know if there was, I think, there was like, if you signed up as a city employee, maybe Ms. Nichols can look into this, but I think HR gave him like an hour to be a mentee, or I guess a mentor. So I think that we could go back and look what we did historically and maybe just pick up from there, because that was very successful.
That would be a good program.
That would be, that would be very gracious.
Yeah. A number of years ago, my ex-wife at the time, currently, but she was a mentor for a gal who was selectively mute, and it was successful, very successful. I don't know what's going on here. And it was coming out of the Church Street area. It's really, really, you know, what kind of a population of kids do you think are in need of in the city limits, for example, that you think are, and looking for mentors? Any idea?
Not off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor. I know that within each school, within each school, we have a mentor coordinator who work, they could be a school counselor, a school social worker. Typically, it may be like a lead teacher or dean of students. I would, what I would do, or what I could do to get you some answers on that, is kind of pull them and see where most of their students are. Or they could give us names, and we could kind of pull and see where a lot of our students are coming from. Our highest need, I can tell you where our highest need right now is, is in the middle schools. At Y Middle, Salisbury Middle, and Bennett Middle School. Those are the areas where we have the highest need for students, but also, that's also where we have a lot of our mentors and where they want to go. And also, along the same lines, kind of that, there's a big, there's a big push between second and third grade, when students go from the primary level to the intermediate, and then from intermediate to middle school. That's where you start to see a lot of the requests coming in from parents. Once they figure out, once they knew who we are and what we provide, they start to ask us to, for applications and permission slips.
Would it be a way of combining mentor-mentees in some of our community centers, like Truitt Street or Newton Street? It would be a gathering spot for meet-after-school?
Like Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We operate kind of independently of all of those. Now, we do work within certain aspects of like Project Move, like at Parkside High School, there's Project Move. There's, what was it called at Parkside? It's Project Move. There was a couple of other after-school programs where we're working in getting mentors, student mentors, working in with the populations of those students, like perhaps one of the neighborhood schools, like Prince Street, working with and starting up after-school programs there. That's one of the initiatives that we do have. But as far as outside of the schools, we haven't really gone that far yet.
Can you give us a general idea of what it would be like during that hour? I know there's an orientation for the mentor, but when you go to these schools, someone who is not as comfortable in a school situation, when you meet this child, is there some type of format that is presented that would give somebody direction?
That's a great question. So what we have in every school, including our alternative school choices and at the evening high school setting, is we actually have a mentor package. It's one of those Sterilite boxes. And within that box, what we have is we have card games, we have age-appropriate games, playing cards, Uno, board games, educational games, coloring. We have different things that, once you're in the schools and you start to get to know you're a mentee, you have things that you can, that we have there that you can use. Like my, one of my mentees, our second, one of my second graders really loves checkers and he loves chess. He wants to, he's trying to learn chess, and I'm trying to teach him as patiently as possible. But we do have things that students can work with their mentors on. It could be just conversation. For example, the best way that I got to know one of my mentees was actually go to lunch for a couple of times with him, and just sit there and talk to him and talk to some of the other kids that are around. And then from there, I kind of got to know him a little bit more, and we've, you know, built a good rapport playing games and just kind of talking. He'll talk and I'll listen, and sometimes that's really all you need. Sometimes it's a little bit more in-depth. But generally speaking, within the schools, the mentor coordinator is in possession of things that the mentor and the mentee can use to kind of break the ice and to get to know one another and then start to build that relationship up.
I know that Lilia, I think I'm pronouncing it correctly, with the Salisbury Police Department, has made inroads with Prince, not Prince Street, but with Pinehurst, with a group of young girls. And she said that the difference from day one and when it ended was just so rewarding for everyone. She just recommends anybody to get involved.
And to bring Pinehurst in, we have 27, I believe, 27 mentees at Pinehurst, and they all have mentors actively working with them. We'd like that in every school.
Absolutely. So we're hoping that after, of course, you know, this conversation, and we'll continue to reverberate and make sure that we get the word out, this is a positive program, well, providing positive impact. So we'll be sure to do our part, and we'll look forward to that collateral from you and make this an ongoing conversation. So again, thank you, Mr. Hessen.
Thank you very much, all.
And we wish you the best. Thank you. All right. So next on the agenda is the budget amendment to appropriate additional funds required for field operations with Deputy Director of Field Ops, Mr. Sam Ireland.
Hello. Our department was tasked with the sale of used pieces of city equipment via an online auction. We netted a little over $40,000. So I'm just here to request the transfer of those funds into the various accounts listed in the ordinance.
Absolutely. Could you just briefly, you know, just so that the public knows and so that councils, how these funds came, how do we get this increase?
We just use gov deals, and we take pieces of equipment that have been essentially spent their lifespan, but can still be used in other municipalities occasionally and private sector.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a good thing to get funds back. So any questions from council?
No, that's great. Thank you. Give us money. We love it. Thank you.
Seeing no public input, do we have consensus to move this forward? Yes. Great. Thank you. All right. So we'll bring up Deputy Chief, Deputy Fire Chief Chris Obarski to accept a grant from the Maryland Department of Health for cancer testing supplies.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
And looks like Chief Chris.
He's my backup.
In case you had any specific questions.
Yes.
Just give me a second real quick, get stuff out. Get my readers on. So yes, as some of you may be aware, this past year, our department implemented a pretty robust cancer reduction program for us. In case you didn't know, cancer is quickly becoming, if not already superseded everything else, as far as, you know, dangers to firefighters across the country. And the Salisbury Fire Department certainly has been no stranger to its members being affected by cancer. So last year, or actually, the end of last summer, we actually bought tests, cancer tests ourselves, and we screened, what was it, 96 of our members. It was voluntary. We didn't make people do it, and it was quite a success. We actually had some members who actually hit on some things and actually followed up with their primary care to follow up. This year, we actually came across a grant through the Maryland Department of Health, and we are, we're kind of on a time crunch with the state. This was, it was kind of a first thing that they, or first time they've ever done this. So they're kind of stepping through uncharted areas, too. So that's why we're kind of in a time crunch with this. And, but they have agreed and granted us $22,009 to buy the next round of tests. The thing is, we have to have it by the end of this fiscal year to get that done.
So how many tests will that, for this 22, just over 22,000, how many are, you know, what does it?
How many it was?
I believe it is a...
I think it's 140, I think, off the top of my head. It's like 130, 140 tests.
And is the program for testing, is that still voluntary with?
It's still voluntary. And we do it within, we do it within our own department. So our medics or our MDCN folks will actually draw the blood for us. And then we have a centrifuge, we'll spin the blood, and then we send it off. And then, last year, we got a pretty quick response time. Within two days, our members were getting emails back with their results.
And last question from me, what is the, so if I got tested this year in 2024, when's the next time that I should, what is the recommendation for?
Our plan was to do it yearly, every year. That's correct.
Especially with people with active exposure.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it really does give us, especially for like new members coming in, it really does create that baseline, so that if they end up, we're coming in, we test them, and they're, you know, they don't test for anything, and they have a 20, 25, 30-year on the job, and then somewhere down the road, they pop for some sort of a cancer, we can do a better job of kind of steering that towards probably occupational. So.
Questions from council?
I just think it's just great. I lost a parent to cancer, and it's a very, very tough disease. And, you know, anything that can catch it early is good.
Thank you all for continuing to look out for these grants and keep those readers on so you can look out for those grants.
Phew, the taste.
We have consensus to move this forward, council?
Yes.
Good. And talk to us about the EMS supplemental payment program.
Well, that's why I brought my buddy here, Truitt, in case you had any specific questions. If you remember, last year, Chris really worked hard on his own to get us this supplemental money. If you remember, we actually got, I think, around a million dollars from additional Medicaid money through EMS transports. And then we were just recently advised that from that money, they actually shorted us. So they told us, oh, by the way, there's additional money for you, to the tune of $113,732.25. We would like, in requesting to have that money, due to our overtime budget drastically taking hits through, because we're using a lot of it to run our fourth-run medic unit to help with our call volume, but also, we've had FMLA issues, sick issues, people on vacation, and it's really eaten into our overtime. And we'd like this money to go into that overtime account. And we feel that it should be able to get us to the end of this fiscal year.
That was my one question.
Yeah. I knew where you were going to get.
What other questions do we have from council?
You're the same.
Okay. That was, okay. Yeah. I don't think, so are you, anything you can tell us about looking forward for these programs that we can, are you seeing any hope for funds in the future?
Yes. We've applied again for this past calendar year, and we're just waiting to hear how much it figures out to be.
Well, hopefully, since they're looking back and backdating some extra funds, hopefully that can be some insight into some future funds. So, yeah. Well, thank you all for continuing to look for extra programs. Council, we have this consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Of course. All right. And next, we'll move on to the Mitchell Landing closing documents discussion. I'll have my VP, Angela Blake, lead this portion of the discussion since, due to my recusal of this, due to my recusal from this, from this item.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so in the packet, which I can't get into because I'm locked out of my account, which I did nicely. But anyway, there is a letter that was sent to the mayor and council regarding an April 3 deadline. I think it's from Mr. Custis. Oh, you have it up. Thank you, Mr. Custis.
Yes.
Which is their lawyer regarding a start date and a commitment on the city's part to move, to start this project. Administration, discussion, where are you at with that?
Yeah. I mean, so for history, this was a project that fell into disrepair under the city's watch, and we entered into an agreement in 2021 with a buyer in Green Street Housing. And when I came on as mayor, I kind of dug into it and realized that perhaps, which I think we discussed in closed session, what was discussed at council and what was ultimately, I'm having problems with my mic, or anybody else having a problem? What was discussed at council and what was agreed to in the LDA, or what was put in the LDA, were two, what's that?
Two different.
It is John's, okay. What was agreed to by council and what was actually put in the loan disposition or the land disposition agreement were two different things. So I raised the issue, and I guess we, it took me about three or four weeks to sort of figure out where the confusion lied. And then we had a closed session discussion on the topic, and council gave me permission to go back and try and renegotiate with the buyer. But I needed to do a couple of things, a couple of other things, which one of the things I wanted to do was inspect the property, talk to the state, and have a, do a little more due diligence, which has taken me to this, to this point. Last week, I met with Robin Cockey, who's the lead partner at Cockey Brendan Maloney, and he has agreed to officiate a conversation on our behalf with the attorney, John Custis, and either of the principals of Green Street, so we can have a full discussion of what went down and, you know, and how we can work this out. So at the end of the day, that's where we are. And I think Robin's in the process of trying to set that up. I think he reached out to John already on that topic.
That's not, well, okay, that's fine. What we're going to do is that, when we talked, we had, I think, till March 15, because we knew time was ticking, and they need to get going here on this. It's, the council's already voted on it. It's already been approved, the money, the funding. The LDA is an actual contract. We've also talked to council, and I think, I think Robin was confused. My understanding is Robin was a little confused in regards to, maybe Heather can clarify, but... in regards to, maybe Heather can clarify, but the council, the council did give you in closed session, an opportunity within a two-week period to feel like you wanted to negotiate with Green Street regarding property, money for the property. However, as LDA is that it's already written as a contract, it's already a done deal, the council's already approved it, and the council's gonna use their ministerial act, and we're gonna go ahead and move forward with that. So we could tell Mr. Custis to go ahead, that the council's approved it, he can move forward, and Heather, your office will be providing a letter to Mr. Custis saying that we're gonna go ahead with that project. I'm sorry, my mic keeps going in and out, but that's what we're gonna do this evening.
So it's my understanding, they haven't even presented their, her tax credits at this point. They haven't been awarded yet. So I don't think, the time is self-induced on your part, so.
It's, it's.
My understanding, it's my understanding, I don't know, but the, so again, I just spoke with Robin last Thursday, so if there's any clarification problems, it was Easter, so Friday, so he didn't call me today, so I would, I would ask to, have you heard anything to the contrary, Heather?
So I spoke with, I've been out of the country, so forgive.
Oh, okay, okay.
I did debrief with Robin at about 3:30 this afternoon, preparing for today's meeting. And what Robin and I discussed is that we do believe that all of the voting required to send this to settlement has already happened.
Correct.
However, if you wish to arrange for a meeting with Mr. Custis, we didn't see that there would be any problem with that. But if the council wants to change course and not go to settlement, then that is going to require new legislative action. It's gonna require new voting, and we would recommend that you have another closed session to get the advice of council before making that decision.
So my position has never been that they didn't have an agreement. I didn't, I've never suggested that. What I'm, what I'm saying simply is that what was presented by administration at that time, and what council believed to be the case, were two different things, meaningful, meaningful differences between what was agreed to and what was actually signed by the disposition. And that's all I'm saying. I'm saying that all I'm looking out for is the taxpayers' asset, and I'm, I, I wouldn't otherwise make a big deal out of this, except for the fact that it's meaningful, substantial, like a million dollars, from what was the difference between what was presented and what actually got to agree to, more than a million dollars. So that, again, I have no skin in the game, other than to say, I think it's, it takes us a moment, a little bit of protocol, to step back, and let's have a conversation with the buyer, help him understand the misunderstanding, and have that conversation. I don't think, like I say, he doesn't even have his tax credits at this point.
The council did give you a window of opportunity. That window has closed. We have already voted on this, and we are going to invoke the ministerial act, and we are going to supersede that. And council, our legal counsel can write a letter to Mr. Custis saying it's a go with the project. And as being on the council prior, and I know Michelle was on the council prior, it's very difficult, I would say, that the mayor would know what the council understood or not understood. We went through that whole process, we went through the project, and we clearly understood what the, the contract and the LDA meant. So you had your turn. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So that's the direction the council is going at this time. Council, are we moving forward with this?
So, so I have one more comment?
Council, are we moving forward with this?
Yes.
Yes.
So one more comment, one more comment.
DeShawn, are we moving forward with this?
You can't deny a comment, Angela. I mean, listen.
I'm in, I was in the middle of saying, I was in the middle of saying.
And when you're done, I'll ask you a comment.
I was in the middle of saying something.
Folks, folks.
I was in the middle of.
Folks, exactly, whoa.
I was in the middle of speaking.
Hang tight, hang tight. Again, protocol has been set. If one person is speaking, please don't interrupt. You need to ask whoever is leading the meeting to come back in. And we need to keep this short, brief, and tone and temper needs to be at a minimum.
And I was in the middle of saying, are we moving this forward? And I know you want to make a comment, but we're gonna wait until after I get the, the answers to, are we moving it forward? Councilwoman Gregory, Councilwoman DeShield? Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Blake, yes. Okay. The council, that's the direction the council's going in. Thank you.
Are you done? Okay. See, again, the whole point of me making initiatives, again, the taxpayers, I know that you voted on this part. You don't need to vote on it again. You've already voted on it once. And I think I proved back in the closed session that in fact, there was an oversight. There was a distinct, well, I mean, it was just an oversight. I can prove it with the documentation, and how it was presented, and how, so listen, again, you know, I'm just trying to do my best to recover what I believe to be a modicum of what's fair for the asset being sold. I think it was a misunderstanding, and whether you, I think we proved it back in the, in the closed session. You can take it or leave it in terms of how you believe it, but that, I think that's why you gave me permission to go back and renegotiate. That meeting will still occur, independent of what the council thinks. So I appreciate the time there, but that's just the way it is. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to the update on the Carroll Street and Eastern Shore. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a comment on it. We do have one comment on this. I thought it was just about the TIF. Wait a minute. And we have, we have two comments on it. Okay, Molly Hiligas?
Hi. For the record, I'm Molly Hiligas, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity and a resident of the city of Salisbury. And I am very familiar with this project. In fact, during COVID, we advanced rental assistance to residents in that property. I'm also aware that the property was condemned, that there were many units condemned under the, while the city of Salisbury had control of the property and was managing it, or had outsourced it, or what have you. And I am also aware of the low-income housing tax credits that will be used to help to redevelop this property. Low-income housing tax credits, this will be the last property that we'll be able to take advantage of that because of the census that, our most recent census. So it's really, really important, the timing of the rehab of this project happen expeditiously, so that the developer can take advantage of those low-income housing tax credits, which help to keep, they actually keep the property available for low-income families that need subsidized housing. And I'm very upset that there was a chance that this project could be delayed because of the shortage of affordable housing in the city of Salisbury. And I applaud the council for moving this forward, so that the development, redevelopment of this property can happen, and we can get families housed in subsidized and affordable units. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I also have to see on, Vaughn, you had, you had a comment on this too? Okay.
I'd just like to say that the city has not done a great job in, in the stewardship of this property. And unfortunately, it is in such derelict condition because of that poor stewardship. I am so disappointed, so greatly disappointed, the disregard that you've demonstrated toward the mayor as an administrator, as someone who also has joined the force to take on the responsibility of care for the citizens of Salisbury. Time is of the essence, perhaps, in more ways than one. The mayor has not been here to be a participant in that process. You have. You have not given him a fair chance, in my opinion. And I, for one, am particularly disappointed with your moving it forward in such disregard for the role that the mayor plays in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Is there any comments online? We were, we were taking comments online, were not? Okay, nobody. Thank you.
Just, just for clarity, last comment I'll make, absolutely do I want to bring that back online. Exactly, that's my, that's my intention. All I'm saying is that we're basically giving the property away. That's, that's all I'm saying. And the impression of the council was that they were getting a certain dollar, which in this case was 1.3 million, and it was just a confusion, in my opinion. Having said that, I am a pro housing, pro affordable housing guy. That has nothing to do with this conversation, absolutely nothing. Has something to do with getting a fair price for the taxpayers' asset, that's it. Which could actually be recycled in some of the programs you're working on.
All right, so moving forward, ready to receive an update on Carroll Street and Eastern Shore Drive. And this, this intersection is quite a concern to many constituents, so looking forward to any information that we can provide on that, and looking to what we can do in the future.
So in reference to Carroll Street, design plan is done. You will see a presentation of that in the next coming council work session, because it's associated with the Safe Streets for All grant funding that the city has received. So the budget ordinance and all the documentation has been sent to legal for review. So hopefully, next work session, we'll be able to have the presentation of the grant, accepting the grant money from the Federal Highway Administration and the Maryland Department of Transportation to see Carroll Street project to the, to completion. One of the holdups was if we go and cut part of the pavement out where the grass is gonna be the medians, because of the winter, we couldn't plant grass. So it's all about timing, but we have a presentation that we'll be making once we get the grant documents back from legal to get it on your work session.
Okay.
So that's Carroll Street.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. President. As far as the grant money, is it designated as to how that money should be spent? And my reason for asking that is I personally think that there is not a street in this town that is more dangerous than what has been done to Carroll Street. And because of that, if the grant money is coming in, my question is, is it designated to alter some of the problems that I see on Carroll Street as is suggestion, as is suggested in Vision Zero, that if something is not working, that it be evaluated, not just restate the status, but evaluated in terms of how it can be made safer for cars, as well as pedestrians and bikers?
So the funding that we're receiving is specific, a part of it is specific to the Carroll Street project. There is other funding mechanisms that we are receiving that can address other bikeways and other changes, but the funding that we're getting for Safe Streets for All is earmarked specifically for the Carroll Street project. Now, you'll have an opportunity to see the plan and the, what Carroll Street will look like, and then we can have conversations on that at the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, was there, was there a redesign in that before, or was that the same design?
There has been some redesign.
Redesign.
Yes, done to the, from the original project with widening some of the lanes, and the pedestrian crosswalks, and the medians. So there has been some redesign done, yes.
And we'll have another opportunity, when we look at the plans, to kind of say, something else, something else, something else. Okay.
We look forward to, to seeing that presentation, and I'm hoping that we address some of the, the concerns with the public, and then we'll look forward to that, the public input at that meeting. So thank you all for addressing that, and thank you for looking into that. And then, like I said, we look forward to that in the near future.
So that was Carroll Street, Eastern Shore Drive.
Oh, yes, yes.
Eastern Shore Drive is still in the design planning phase. There's been really no additional movement on that project, because there's really no funding mechanism associated with that project at this time.
Mr. President, one, one comment with Eastern Shore Drive that I found really interesting is when the study was done, the feasibility study on Eastern Shore and Carroll Street, there were some really good suggestions as far as pedestrian crossing, biking, and particularly stop signs and lighting, not traffic lights, which to me is a really good start, even if Eastern Shore Drive is on hold.
I think, and John can correct me, but I think some of the things that are earmarked for Eastern Shore Drive are some of the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
And pedestrian, and pedestrian crossings.
Right.
Is the only thing that we're really looking at right this minute.
Which to me is, that's a very deep street, a very wide street, so that would be very helpful, pretty good for people walking from bind to the hospital in that area, yeah.
I believe some of that funding is also in the Safe Streets for All.
Yeah.
Are we exploring other ways to get funding for this?
Yes.
Good. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. I do see we have one from, from the public. Mr. Madrew? Any online?
Great, thanks for the opportunity. Matt Drew, I live at 301 North Clermont Drive in Salisbury. Councilwoman DeShield very much agree with you. I think that, you know, Carroll Street started, and it doesn't work very well. You pointed out some, some very, very good comments, in my opinion, about how it doesn't work for vehicles, and quite frankly, it doesn't work for bikes right now either, because it's completely disconnected. It does not connect very well to the downtown pedestrian bridge. It stops halfway down the, the length of Carroll Street, and then the future design will actually extend and have a crossing across Route 13, as I understand it, to eventually get as far as Snow Hill Road. That will be a first for us, you know, with, with bike lanes that we've done in Salisbury, for the most part, we have not bridged across a state highway road. And so to the extent that, you know, I, I get to hear a lot of very valid criticisms about the bike lanes not being used here in the city, and a lot of the reason for that is that we don't have the connectivity. I think this project will give us that connectivity. So very much look forward to the, the presentation at the next council meeting, but very much in favor of moving this project forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, discuss the TIP policy. So again, I know that at the last works.
I just, there's the other, the other, let me see.
Regarding the TIP policy?
No, we do, before the TIF, and I don't see it on the agenda, but I do see it in the packet, the letter from Title Health.
Yes, so we'll.
Want to circle around with that? Do you want to?
Let's, so regarding the TIP policy, I know that we, from council, we, we asked for a draft policy. I think it was, so it was that last work session, we asked for it to be at the end of the week or by last week. I sent an email to administration and CC the mayor, didn't hear a response back. So we would like an update on when we should receive that TIP policy, if we just.
I think our goal is to get it, we've done a couple of different versions and looking at it, but I think the goal is to get it to the next, not next week, the two weeks, the next work session. But we've been, between Andy doing, Union and doing Budget Together and all the other stuff, it's hiring DAD, I think everybody's been sort of busy, so I think we're getting there, though. We're getting there.
So.
So that's the next work?
Yeah, next work session, two weeks, so, two weeks.
15th.
The 15th.
So are we, because we were told that we would.
Andy and I came to that conclusion this morning. We just kind of looked at, you know.
Gotcha.
What we've got going on.
So in future, if you don't mind just responding to the email, just let us know that we wouldn't have.
Okay, I thought we had, okay.
So I sent two, and so just, if you want to just let us know what, because we had people asking us, and, you know, again, we put it on the work session, and we had no supporting material, so if you just, so we should expect a draft policy, you're saying next week for the 15th?
Two weeks, next work session, 15th.
So next, can we see it?
Next workstation, work session. You mean a draft?
We would like to see the draft.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll give you a draft in advance, so you can review it before the work session, yeah.
So I know that that was one of my concerns, you know, I was hoping that the city administrator was gonna be here, but I think consistently, you know, we, as from council, we, we send emails and correspondence without any correspondence back, and so we would like that to be something of fluid conversation. If we have questions or concerns, I know that was the proper chain of command, is to email the city administrator, CC the mayor, and I don't think any of my emails, any of the council's emails have gone answered in the last month or so.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that that wasn't something you guys weren't aware of. Okay.
Yeah, so this, so can we just publicly stay from, from here on out? Can we, can we have correspondence?
Well, if you CC me, I'm assuming that Andy's gonna respond to you.
Or if I email you. So we're just, all I'm asking, and I'm not trying to, I'm just saying.
No, I know.
Can we just respond so that we, you know, we like to communicate?
The mayor's office has been overwhelmed lately. We've got a lot going on. I got you, but I hear you. We got a TIP policy in the pipeline, I get it, but I hear you.
All right, I got you, yes. We own council, we appreciate that, and, you know, we, I know. We own council, we, we appreciate that and, you know, we, I know I'm, I don't want to say everyone's busy, you know, so. You know, I work a full-time job and I counsel, so, but we would like to at least, so inform us, just say, hey, we want to have this ready for this date, because when I write something down and it's in here, I.
Yeah, we didn't really decide that until this morning, so.
Okay, so we're saying by the fifteenth, we'll have it, which means if we can have it by that Wednesday or Thursday, for us to review it.
Before, yeah.
Great. Great, sorry, taking a point of privilege, I did, referencing the letter from Title Health, you all did receive that documentation from?
It is in the packet.
Okay, so we'll just have the, the public review that. I know that we have comments regarding the TIF policy, so Lynn Bratton?
Good afternoon, City of Salisbury council members, mayor, city clerk. My name is Lynn Bratton, I live in Salisbury and have for many years. I respect and appreciate all the efforts that people do for our city, especially those who are elected. And I understand that the compensation is not great, it's like being a school teacher. You do it somewhat because of the love that you have for the industry that you're working for. And one of the biggest things that I see in school systems that drove me to want to do a better job was the respect and kindness shown to me by my colleagues and by my students and by my parents and by the community. And I think that we're getting ready to lose some of that with the tenor of the conversations that are going on in our city council right now. Now, that's just my opening statement, didn't think I was going to need to say it, but I'm going to speak for a minute now about TIF.
Thank you.
I am concerned, as a city taxpayer for many years and met multiple properties, about borrowing money and funding projects for the possibility of future returns. And we are in a budget system right now, we're in the middle of budgets. I've sat through the budget hearings on Zoom many times, listening to lots of reports. And I feel that we should be entering into all conversations right now relative to financial benefits for anyone with caution, with open eyes, and with patience. And I do not see rushing into anything in a hurry without getting all due diligence, without protecting our financial status, our bond ratings, our ability to borrow, our ability to pay our bills. And for that reason, I would like you to give due diligence to the report on the horizon that I know has to be reviewed soon, to slowing down the TIF and whatever else is in the pipeline for financial gain or benefits for any sort of developments or programs. And for that reason, I simply say, please be kind to one another in this process, be willing to listen and not shut each other off and put each other down. And let's move forward with a degree of intelligence that I think we all voted you in here because you have. And that I know you are willing to become even more so informed by reading, researching, talking to other communities where they have had TIFs, understanding that the people who are developing your TIF programs will also be the ones who will be benefiting from the rewards of those programs should they go forward. And I'm not sure that that seems a little on the contradictory perspective, that those who are helping to write the programs and advocate for the programs will also then be benefiting from those programs. So please do due diligence, don't rush into something so quick because it looks like a good idea. Think with the end in mind, I was a covey, a leadership person. Think win-win, think with the end in mind. Those concepts really do show your depth of willingness to see our city prosper, grow, and develop in a prudent, responsible fiscal way. Let the mayor do the deep dive into the budget that I think he's already working on. Let him show where things have been spent now and in the future requests are being made. Look at what's happening, and my time is about up, Mrs. Blake, I will stop, thank you for reminding me of that. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. LaRusse?
Again, Molly Hiligas, city resident. And I live right around the corner from where the property is going to be redeveloped, the old Salisbury Mall property. A location where I had my first state, for all of you that might remember, Salisbury Mall. Anyway, great memories there.
We don't need any details.
You don't need details, no, no details. So for those, for those of you watching or interested in more information about the TIF, I'm just learning more about it, but from my understanding, there'll be about 200 or so single-family homes and townhomes that will be built on that property. Ryan Homes is the, the developer, they're under some other LLC name, but it's Ryan Homes. And so I just did the quick math, if 200 units are sold, city, the city will receive about $2,000 a year in income, in property tax from those units. So that's about 400,000, give or take, right? About 400,000 in property tax from those new units, which we desperately need. We desperately need new housing, folks, desperately, 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 of all types. All types are needed, not just affordable. And there'll be affordable housing in these units, from what I understand. There'll be townhomes in the $200,000 range and single-family homes in the $300,000 range, which is great. I don't know how much the property tax is on that property right now. I don't, if, if you could look it up, anyway, it's probably less than 400,000 a year, would be my guess. And what I, the little bit that I understand about a TIF is that it's going to offset the common areas of the subdivision. And so that seems to me reasonable, like there should be a grassy area, there should be a little, you know, pocket park or what have you. And, and if the developer says, hey, I really don't want to pay tax on that and it's going to benefit the neighborhood, you know, I'm all for that. What I'm not for is delays in development. So I urge the mayor and the administration to move quickly on creating this TIF policies and be transparent so that the public can understand it, so that we can get more housing out of the ground. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, so and I just, I appreciate that, and that's what we were, again, we, we want the due diligence to be done and we wanted council to make sure that we, you know, sat and read through it and, you know, that the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed, that's why we wanted that week to look at it. So we still want, we want that diligence to make sure that, that council looks at it. And then also I want to address, I know there was a comment made at last meeting that the city manager from Cambridge actually left, left his post because of TIF. And, you know, I have some municipal colleagues in Cambridge and I, I interacted with Mr. Carroll myself. And that wasn't the sole reason why he left, and it wasn't because of TIF, that he thought TIF was this, this horrible thing. But it was just the use of, it was TIF in respect to this particular project, he didn't quite understand, he didn't quite like. So he's not afraid of TIF, he doesn't, you know, think TIF is some horrible monster, but it was, he didn't want to use TIF for this project, to fund that project. So again, I wanted to address that, I know, you know, everything we see on the news is true, so we, we, but just doing our due diligence to make sure we don't spew out anything that's not correct. Mayor, you have?
Yeah, one comment, to your point, you're right, that's why we're kind of developing a TIF policy, to kind of put a collar around what developers can and use for both the, the use of the funds, but also how it gets repaid. To your point, relative to the common area, that's not really the purpose of a TIF. TIF is for common to the community that is being born as a part of the development. In the case of like Idler, Idler Farm, we put in the, the collector row. That was kind of common to the community, but not specific to the development, which is, I think, the key to the whole thing. And so it has to be thoughtful, mindful, and it kind of anticipate. People, and to the point that the president was making relative to Cambridge, they can be abused. And I think in some cases, they can load them up in an inappropriate way to make it advantageous to develop inappropriately. So that's why we've got to get it right. And again, I hate to keep saying this, but I've been 14 weeks in, in office, I'm just taking it all in. But we'll, we'll get there, we'll get it done, so, yeah.
Yeah, so moving forward to our next conversation, again, the council and mayoral recognition. Again, I think, we talked about this previously, but council is, is going to be, you know, taking over the reins of some portion to be able to let the public, if they wanted a special recognition or, or award from council, then we're going to be doing that, the clerk's office is going to be taking that on. And so this is just a conversation for council to have to formulate a couple of things. I know that the clerk's office had some questions and so did a few of us. So just have a, a conversation just regarding that. So one, did we want to do certificates, awards, and what do we want to do? What, what do we want the items that we can give to the public or to businesses here in the area?
I think covering any of those kind of topics would be great. I mean, I, I know that we just this weekend gave a proclamation to the Celebrate La Femme event that was going on. They had initially requested a, they had initially requested a proclamation and were sent a certificate instead. And we were able to get them that, that proclamation, but I think that that's, you know, I think whatever people are asking for is something, we should meet what they're requesting. I don't think it causes us to have too much trouble to meet those requests. They're very, a lot of times they're very simple requests, and I think meeting those requests is part of our job.
I have a question, because I'm, so what happened to the proclamation, they asked for a proclamation?
They asked, they asked for a proclamation and they got a certificate.
So who'd they ask to give them the proclamation, the administration, the mayor?
The mayor's.
And then you just sent a certificate instead?
Who, who was?
I'm asking, I'm, because I, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm asking too.
So a group asked for a proclamation?
Correct. And?
And they got a certificate?
They got a certificate.
And who are we talking about? I'm not familiar with this case at all.
It was a women's empowerment group that, and so.
I'm not familiar with it, at all.
So.
Mr. President, would, do you want to define certificates, proclamations, and awards?
Yes.
So that it's a little, made a little more clearly when someone does request that?
Absolutely, so, and I might actually solicit the clerk, so right now we have certificate of recognition, certificate of appreciation, and then there are proclamations, those are the three types.
And citation.
And citation, so there, there are four, four then, that the public can ask for. And so this, man, so this is, this is what we're asking, is do we want to do off, do we want to have those, all four of those issued, or do we want to choose out of, out of those? I want this to be a, I didn't want to make the executive decision myself, but I wanted it to be a fluid conversation between council.
I'm flexible, I mean, like, we could do any and all.
Okay.
I'm good with all of the.
I, I agree.
And it will say from the city, Salisbury City Council? Okay, we'll submit it via online, we'll have a, a link there. How much notice do we think, that's where I want to bring you into the conversation? What notice are you comfortable clerk's office?
No less than two weeks.
Okay.
Three or four weeks is much better on the longer ones.
Sure.
Proclamation, ones that.
Do we want to?
If we're busy or if we have to have a month declared, we certainly wouldn't want it. We'd want it the month prior.
So four weeks for that, okay.
Because if we get it that very same month, then we're already into the month they want declared, whatever.
Oh, I see.
Day or month, yes.
Do you have any?
I, I just, I was going to say, is there a process for us to, would we be able to put together a process, like a form for someone to fill out or something to make it easier for folks who want to request this?
Is there one online?
There is.
So we're going to put it on, we're going to put it on our actual city council page. So right now, I, like for, for the newfound, if you, you want to become a, an intern for the city council, there's a landing page there, I want to make it easier for folks. So soon we'll have just landing pages everywhere on the city council site. But I'm a person of ease, so I know we'll put a, a link there for requesting ceremonial documents there and have that. And so you'll work with IT to create that, any other things we should note on, on here or? No? Good, okay, so we'll move forward with that. If, if clerk's office has any individual questions, just contact me and we'll make sure that gets addressed. And, all right, moving forward to administration and council comments, so we'll start with administration.
Hi, I have no comments. I was just going to add one thing, I think it's probably a little longer overdue, over the last few weeks we've had these council meetings and, you know, and really to compliment what Ms. Bratton and Ms. Siggers commented on. And that, look, I didn't take on this role to do anything else besides to help the city of Salisbury. And I was a busy guy, and I'm still a busy guy, and I'm trying to do my best. I've taken a lot, you know, I think I bring a lot of qualities to the table, my banking background, real estate world, to the table to really help, and I think I've already helped a little bit. Someone give me more credit than maybe I deserve, but I come here solely to help the city of Salisbury. And to take any kind of position that says that I'm in any kind of, I'm not a political person. I don't have a political angle, I'm just trying to do the best thing I can by the taxpayers and the city. Period, new paragraph. Got nothing else to, I, I got plenty of things to do with my life, and I'm just coming here to try to do my best. So if you stand up or take a position that's different than mine, that's okay. We can disagree, do it peacefully, do it gracefully, do it, you know, agreeably. I'm not going to be mad at you, I hope you're not mad at me. But at the end of the day, that's what we need to do as part of this administration and council. I'm not trying to hurt you, I'm not trying to hurt, I hope you're not trying to hurt me. But listen, I think anybody that knows me, that knows I'm a pretty, I can, I can, I can end the conversation, but at the end of the day, I'm very cooperative and I want to be that way for you as a mayor. So that's all I wanted to say tonight, and I thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to council comments, councilwoman DeShiel?
First of all, Molly, there is a congratulatory event. You are dedicating a house this on the fifth at 11 o'clock. So congratulations for Habitat and all the work they do. Also, congratulations for, I mentioned her before, Lilila, and I'm so sorry if I'm mispronouncing her name, who's with the Salisbury Police Department, their flag, she and, oh gosh, cap, I don't know the, the ranking, I apologize, drew her, who have been working diligently on getting flag football. And so that starts on April 27th. So supporting these events in Salisbury are what we should all be about and all working together to promote.
And it's a free event, that is free, yes. Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah, so last week I completely failed on my duty and forgot to mention that I had the pleasure of going to my first ever zoo commission meeting. It was, it was really eye-opening, a lot of information, information overload for me, as a matter of fact. There was, there was a lot of discussion amongst the zoo commission, a lot of exciting things happening at the zoo coming up and, and in the future. I just want to ask that folks be patient as the weather warms up and they start to take their kids to the zoo again. There are going to be a lot of projects going on, improvements going on in the zoo over the next few years, actually, and just have some patience. I know change is hard, but this is all going to be for the better, for the animals and for the public. So I'm really excited to see these projects as they go. They just start, they literally had started them the day of the meeting on the 20th. So I, I'm really looking forward to seeing how these exhibits are get, are updated and expanded. Other than that, I, like I said, I got to attend the Celebrate La Femme event on, on Saturday. It was an amazing event, Molly was there. It was, you know, I got to just see the tail end of it, I, I wasn't able to make the whole thing, but it was really amazing to see so many fantastic women, I recognize so many faces, amazing women who are moving in the community and doing the work, showing up. And because it is such thankless work so often, it is nice to see women patting each other on the back and, and giving folks the due that they deserve. So that was a really amazing event to, to attend.
Thank you. Council vice president?
Just as always, if you are healthy enough, please donate blood, plasma, and be an organ donator. I've, I've got a pretty significant surgery myself up on Friday, and they've already loaded up on some of these types of items for me. And I desperately, you know, appreciate those donors to me. And I just wish that everyone would be thoughtful, and you just never know, it could be a family member, a loved one, a neighbor. You never know when you'll be in need for something of that nature. Thank you.
Good, yep, I, this past weekend I had the pleasure of attending the Downtown Business Alliance Spring Fest that they have. And that was a beautiful event, I got to, yeah, yeah, I got to go there quickly before, I was late to my event across the bridge because I wanted to make sure I showed my face and show support. So again, we look forward to the, the, the impact that they'll continue to make in our downtown. And I don't think I. And I don't think I have any other events or things, oh, of course, I hope everyone had a good Easter holiday, if you do celebrate, the weather was pretty decent, I'm hoping we get some, some better weather, and, and Mayor actually alluded to one of my conversations that I was going to bring up, is that, you know, again, I know that we are all, a couple of us are new here, and that we wear pretty big hats, and the shoes are pretty, pretty large, and, so, you know, whatever I do, and I know, I hope you do it as well, is for the greater good of Salisbury, and when I said that last time, you chuckled and huffed, and you gave a huff today, and so I'm a little disappointed, and that's how we kind of confer back and forth, and, yeah, you gave me a huff earlier, but, you know, again, I, you know, one of those, and so, but I'm, you know, that's not-
That's not a huff, that's a half.
I know, so, I know, but I just, I, you know, and I want the public to see, and so we, when we do make decisions here, when it happens at this point, we do give the diligence, but, you know, I'm a person that when I write a number down, so if you say by this date, I'm going to have this, I sort of expect that, and again, we have the conversations, we want things to continue to progress, and, you know, when we all took this hat, we took it to, just give me a second, I got you, we, so we all took this to, to continue moving forward, and that's what we're going to do, so, we're going to continue to do our due diligence, not trying to fast-track anything, make sure we do it in a way that's responsible, that's for the greater good, so, there's no, you know, there's, I want things to be good, but that starts with also communication, that's why I brought it up earlier, I don't, how many emails I send and texting calls, I have to physically go downtown to get an answer for some things, and that's not how it should happen, and so, hold on one second, give me one second, so that's what, I just want, I just want the open lines of communication, because again, you can call me anytime, either phone, and email me, I answer emails and the public knows, I answer emails very quickly, I take this job seriously, and I think that's what I want the public to know, is we want things, we have questions, but it's left unsaid and unremarked, and so that's where we get frustrated, but again, a lot of these things can be talked about, but, give me one second, a lot of things can be talked about behind the scenes, and if we just discuss it, and so going back further, as a person who works in affordable housing, as their day job, along with this job, I know what it takes, and so I know some of the details, and I know that you'll see the answers to some of those questions that you have in some point, and when I work with the jurisdictions across the bridge and in other states, and I see how they treat the developers in the affordable realm, I'm disappointed in my own backyard, we don't treat them the same way, it honestly hurts, that in other jurisdictions, they welcome us, they have conversations, it's, it's not fast-tracked, but it's moving along with progress, because they see that affordable housing needs to happen, housing needs to happen.
Yes.
We have to do it in a way that's responsible for our people, so it doesn't matter if I have a nice house to go to, but if our residents don't have that, we have to work as hard, and that's what I'm trying to get you to understand, not that I'm trying to shortchange anyone, but again, at least show the people that you want to do it, that's what I want us all to do, and so the bickering, the back and forth, stop, let's figure out when we're going to do it, how we're going to do it, and get there, that's all I want to say.
If anything, if anything I've said or tried to do on behalf of the city has given you a message other than I care about the housing and the quality of it-
I know you do.
Okay.
Let's just do it together.
So, okay, so, to your point, when I said I didn't mean to huff, I wasn't, I thought you, I took it, I apologize, that wasn't what I was trying to, I was just saying, I was like, okay, I was almost like, but my door is always open, my phone is always open, you can call me anytime, if there's an email, I mean, I get, yeah, okay, so, we'll get on the same page and we'll start meeting regularly.
Good.
Okay.
I appreciate that, you all heard it, so we'll get this, we'll get things moving, and we'll get Salisbury moving in a better way, so I appreciate that, Mayor, thank you so much. So, with that, this meeting is now adjourned, and I'll call the special meeting to order, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the special agenda, please? Special meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion, or a second, for ordinance number-
We'll vote first.
For first reading?
Got a motion, second?
Yeah, we got a motion, second. Michelle and Chair.
Call for the vote.
Call for the-
For the special meeting?
She doesn't read it.
Call for the vote before she reads, or, to adopt the agenda first.
All in favor of the special meeting agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
No, and the chair votes aye. Now, can I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2859 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Done on my cheat sheet here.
Ordinance 2859, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department, whereas the Salisbury Fire Department has experienced a significant increase in the use of overtime funds due to sick leave, retirements, resignations, and FMLA leave resulting in a shortage of funds of the, in the Salisbury, sorry, salaries overtime account. And whereas these overtime funds were being used to ensure that emergency personnel were staffing units so that emergency calls for service were being handled appropriately. And whereas the Salisbury Fire Department has a salaries overtime account that is operating at a shortage for the remainder of fiscal year 2024. And whereas the Salisbury Fire Department has a need for additional funding to ensure safe, effective, and efficient staffing levels in response to emergency calls for the remainder of fiscal year 2024. And whereas the City of Salisbury received an unexpected disbursement of $113,732.25 from the underpayment of Medicaid EMS transports as a part of the EMS supplemental payment program, and seeks to increase the EMS Medicaid revenue account with those funds accordingly. And whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore being enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows, section one, the City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, B, hereby is amended as follows, A, increase the current year EMS Medicaid revenue account ending in 219 by $113,732.25, and B, increase the Salisbury Fire Department's salaries overtime account ending in 021, salaries overtime account by $113,732.25.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2859 for first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Can I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2860 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2860, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Health for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $22,009, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Fire Department. Whereas the Maryland Department of Health has a Maryland Professional and Volunteer Firefighter Innovative Cancer Screening Technologies Grant Program, the program. And whereas the purpose of the program is to provide funding for the cancer screening and testing of professional and volunteer firefighters. And whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a grant application to the Maryland Department of Health for funding of cancer screenings of its members as part of the program. And whereas Maryland Department of Health has awarded the city grant funds in the amount of $22,009. Whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Health to define how these funds will be released and accepted. And whereas all funds shall be used to provide cancer testing and screenings to Salisbury Fire Department members. And whereas section 729 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the City of Salisbury. And whereas appropriation is necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the county of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows, section one, Mayor Randolph J. Taylor is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Health on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $22,009. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows, section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget, B, and hereby is amended as follows, A, increase state of Maryland revenue account number ending, I'm going to say beginning 105, by $22,009, B, increase medical expense account number beginning 105-513 by $22,009.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2860 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. This special meeting is now adjourned.